All right, uh thanks so much. So, uh good, good evening, good evening. Uh we are uh starting the uh policy committee meeting for uh the M S A D eleven school district. Uh it's April tenth, uh it is uh twenty twenty five and five thirty five P M. We are starting um let's see without a quorum, uh we're gonna go ahead and start reviewing the uh the documents on the agenda. Um let's see, we'll do uh introductions of.
Committee members.
Yeah, let's do committee members first. Sean Pope, yup, uh Tony Veat Chair, uh Board Member.
Joanne O'Brien.
Pat Hopkins Superintendent.
All right, so.
I don't think uh this committee stuff has been shared with it.
Oh.
So I'm gonna have to add again.
Let's.
It should have been shared publicly with everyone, not just with members of this committee.
Uh let me see right now on that.
Right, cuz the committee just uh sent you a new link board.
Just underneath the agenda.
Let me just check. So this should have gone out, it went out last Friday. Um. And it went out at twelve fifty nine on the fourth. And you were included in that, so yeah, if you scan back, it was posted from Martha. So if you search her name.
Yup. Okay.
See it great, okay.
And yeah, it'll say uh Policy Committee meeting. Great.
So I missed the last meeting. Um but I was filled in uh by Angela, Angela gave me the information and let me explain to me the question as to why these two policies were tabled. Um so um let's start with A C A A R. So really, there were two questions there. Um we go to page. Page twelve. Of that policy. It was a question about discipline and other actions and could we add in that this section like a written warning? Um like we do for staff and yeah, I mean, that's not the problem. I mean, this just says, these are examples of the following types, so could there be a written warning? Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, so if that's what the committee wants, that's, that's totally fine. Um that that can be added. I just need direction from the committee if that's what you want me to do.
So. I didn't have that highlighted on here, what was that on H, H one, H?
That was um.
Two.
H two.
Oh great.
Under discipline and other actions for students. There she is. Megan, be sorry.
So right, whether or not we could add in, as we do for employees, could we add in uh a written warning?
Yeah, well that's, I mean, again, it's just an example, it's not a this has to happen first because I certainly, I listened to the, to the meeting. Um and I certainly heard, you know, Terry Maguire, who's our Title Nine Affirmative Action Officer, who was explaining her process that she uses. Um and it may absolutely be appropriate sometimes to do a written warning. Um and other times you're going to go immediately beyond a written warning and there is going to potentially be um more extensive discipline due to the nature of the incident, so. Um if that's what you want, that is totally okay.
Right, I'd be, I'd be okay with adding that in um. And uh let's see, are you?
Where are you?
So page twelve, um and then it's H two.
On A C A A dash R.
Good, my name of policy.
Oh, of course. Well.
Yeah, I appreciate you uh you reviewing that and yeah, sharing. These are just examples, we're not limited necessarily to one or, or any of them. Yeah, I remember we had a discussion on it. Makes sense to explore where the. Where our commitments would be when we do have them. But. Yeah, okay, yeah, so.
So I've, I've added that, I, that will be added. Um the other question that I saw that came up um regarding this particular policy had to do with the fact that it's labeled as a student um harassment policy, right? It's called student discrimination and harassment, so why is there information here about staff, right? You know, about employees? And so um the reason for that is because should an employee be accused of violating this policy? There are steps that they, that we need to follow, so that's why they're included. The other policy is specific to just employees and it doesn't involve students, so that's why both. Okay. I think, I think those were the, the big questions there. If I recall, I think I got on both. So that should answer um your questions, be responsive to your questions for that particular policy.
The uh. Or a violation of federal law, is that just uh changing these policies, like, match that?
Yeah, um we, our policies that we have in place um after the Title Nine changes, what we're doing here is rescinding them, but um the last policy committee meeting, three policies were rescinded because those were new to Title, the twenty four Title Nine. So those were, right, so we got rid of those. Then in these policies, we were to revert back to twenty twenty. Um we change so many policies all the time, we're always tweaking a little bit, and so I started looking at our archives, right, and going back and trying to find the twenty twenty. And we tweaked a few here, so rather than trying to find exactly that policy um that we had in place in twenty twenty for, for A C A A and A C A B, your association, main school management, sent to all school districts what that policy was back then. So I used that policy just to make sure that I was using the correct policy. Um and that's what I'm putting in front of you. So while we're going through it, all, all we're technically doing is really rescinding the, the twenty four policies, we're just doing it in maybe a different way than other school districts, but I just wanna make sure we have the right policy and I, I was a little concerned because we tweaked policies like in twenty two. I just wanted to make sure I didn't grab the wrong one accidentally and be in violation of the law, so.
Awesome, thank you.
You are welcome.
Right, and uh just, yeah, quick review that Pat, you have an amazing spreadsheet to keep us, you on track for updating these policies within a five-year cycle, just to kind of make sure we're laying eyes on them as a, as a board or as a committee. Um and then we bring uh updates to the board uh as we go. So, yeah, so updates are.
So could I, can I stop you there, I'm really glad that you said that. Um so since Sean, you are new to policy, you're new to policy as well. Um yes, we have a spreadsheet that, well, we created years ago. Um that lists all of the policies that we have, all of the policies as required by law, all the policies that are then recommended by your associations, other policies, the policies that law require be in student handbooks, right? And they're all here, and they're here with the last date that they were reviewed, and we try to review them every five years, right, so that we keep them up to date. I will get you a copy of these, okay? And I will actually, I will send one to every policy committee member, so that you have the most courage. Because any policy that we already has gone through the board for a second read, they, it should be reflected here, so you can see where we are. So the policies that you see today on this agenda should take us through the rest of the policies, for the most part, that really needed to be updated. There are a couple lingering ones that we just haven't had time to get to, class size. Although that's not gonna change significantly, but you still need to look at the class size policy. We need to look at um another policy, instructional goals and learning objectives. But that's really tied to some of the strategic plan work, and we just, we just haven't had time um to do that. Curriculum's been pretty busy. Um but beyond that, those two, we have updated all of the policies that were approved back in twenty twenty, so this will make us current, okay? So I'll, I've made a note to get this to all of you, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, and yeah, always appreciate that level of organization. And I did say every five years, um or as the um, you know, statute changes, our, our needs, our M S M A will uh recommend.
And we try, there are some years where we have more policies, it just happened to be the year where we had more. Um and so sometimes it might be six years, depending on workload, but, but we really do try to review them every five as much as possible. Okay, so then um the next one would be the A C A B R. I looked through the notes that were provided here um and made those changes um as appropriate. You know, I saw where like it didn't have the A O officer next to the Title Nine Coordinator. There were some other little typing um errors that needed to be corrected. I, I made all of those corrections, so again, I think based upon your conversation that you had at the last meeting, I believe I've updated to reflect your recommendations.
Awesome, thank you. I thought it looked, I thought it looked good. Uh and definitely something right we do as a committee in review. If we find something that's, you know, out of place, out of place, like a missing parenthesis or something, or, or whatever, um we'll name it, um sometimes we don't worry too much, I've, I've gotten pretty focused on commas sometimes and they haven't always been strategically necessary for things, so.
And these all come to us from, again, your association, um main school management, they have an attorney on staff and that person monitors the law, and when there are changes to the law, there are new laws, they provide us with updated policy, so I'm not creating these from, from scratch. Uh when we do the review process, I will go to their website, I will find that policy, um and then I will compare, right, and I will make any corrections that are necessary, um so that we're using the most current current languages we're supposed to. So that covers those two, so you're all set with those?
I'm good.
All right, then that kind of takes us into the next one. So at the last meeting, you approved the management of concussion and other head injuries. Well, after you approved it, I think it was the very following week, I received a model policy from the Department of Education. So I took your policy, this time rather than using main school management, I used the Department of Education and their model policy. Um I put them side by side compared, and what you see here with strike throughs and underlines um is it reflects the recommendation from the Department of Education. Um so it is just the protocols that we should have in place regarding the management of concussions. So with this, I mean, if there, I will tell you that there are a couple things here that we've noticed uh with the new law that we'll have to modify, that we don't currently do. So while we have extensive training, definitely for our coaches, um our nurses have it, we have not historically, and I think that this is new to the law, necessarily trained all of our staff who do playground duties, right? Um in that particular case, if an injured, if a student is injured, we've always had the nurse go, right? Um but according to this policy, uh we will now need to make sure that um all of our staff in all of the buildings who do playground duties, that they will have to receive some sort of training on um concussion protocols, so.
So that's sort of a change that we're now seeing, that they're recognizing, oh, there's a potential gap here, yeah. Um and we'll provide those trainings.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to, yeah, yeah. So I'll make sure that Katie is aware of this, um right? And I believe I already mentioned it to her, so that she knows it's a training that will have to be put on for her staff at the start of the next school year.
Thank you. I did have, um I had a couple uh things to check on here, uh so first page. Um in the medical clearance uh section.
Mm-hmm.
Um just that uh it, there could be uh there could be uh an or right before the last uh uh clinician, the certified athletic trainer.
We could put the word or there.
Does it need to be? So it says uh medical clearance indicates a written statement from a healthcare provider licensed uh who is uh who is trained and experienced in the recognition of management of concussions such as a medical doctor, doctor of osteopathy, nurse practitioner, physician, physician's assistant, or certified athletic trainer, which allows um a student to start the school's graduated uh free entry protocol.
Yeah, I just checked the model policy from the D O E, it's not in there, there is no or. Sometimes when I make these transfers, I can absolutely leave something out or accidentally type the wrong word, but no, that is exactly how they have it.
Uh if it's how they have it, I mean, I guess it captures that, we don't need to go in and make a lot of changes, just notice that that piece there, and then on um uh oh, on um on training, uh the, the, so page uh two, right, uh that second or the the first full section, training, um the first sentence, um there's a strikeout through concussion management team, which is fine, C M T should then be de-parentthesized.
Oh, yes, 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 because we've already identified, yep, that's, that's my error, thank you.
Yeah. Let's see, it's still on J J I F, uh page three, management of concussive and other head injuries is the header. Um first bullet point, uh there's a one, two, three, four lines down, it's, there's double underlines, and it says period, and then it says capital I N in the absence. And I think it should just be.
There it is, yeah. See, that's an example of a typing error on my side.
Uh let's see. Uh let's see, page four, J J I F, medical clearance, uh the change, um oh, um I was just noticing, so that first sentence under medical clearance, once a referral to a healthcare provider is made by the school nurse, athletic trainer, the student must receive written clearance, period. Written clearance to return? Written, I don't think it was clear in the last one either, but written clearance, the, I guess this clearance, written clearance means cleared to return to, yeah, okay.
So that's how it's written here, it does say that uh, yeah, once a referral to a healthcare provider has been made by the school nurse, athletic trainer, uh trainer, or other school health professional, the student must receive written medical clearance, period. The medical clearance allows the student to begin the graduated return to school and return to activity protocol, so it explains it in the next sentence.
It sort of defines it, yeah, so I guess, yeah, all right. I, yeah, good.
Anyone else?
All right. I H, oh, go ahead.
Actually, under J J I F, last meeting, you guys uh decided to remove this last section after the legal reference piece, and it just says, uh this is a guide. I don't know if you want that, the model, uh the model policy included it, which is why I left it before, and that's why I have it here.
Okay.
So I would actually put it all on the same page, so it's not separated like that, but um I, I don't know why, um if you already have the legal reference defined, um which we do here, so. I don't know. What do you think?
Uh. It's there, you're okay moving it back up to page five. Um I can't remember, it, it just maybe seemed extraneous, you know, as we were looking at it, um but it does uh uh expound on that a little bit, so.
Okay.
Onto laws.
Okay.
Uh anybody else here, yeah? I mean, I think it, it seems fine, yeah, it's okay that it's there, it doesn't really distract from the rest of the policy. Cool, thank you.
All right, you're welcome, then the next two policies are policies for um falls kind of under our special education department. Um and so both of these policies were shared with the director and the assistant director, I let them know that it was coming here if they had any questions. And they did not get back to me with any, any concerns, and once again, I did compare it with uh with main school management.
Nice, thank you for reaching out to them, and just a quick uh, I guess sidebar uh to the committee, um so uh the superintendent, you know, uh brings these as uh statutes change, brings policies as statutes change, or just for the update effort five years, we also access them through curriculum committee, they'll review policy and send them to us.
Certain policies, right?
Certain policies that apply to them, yes, yes.
So like the class size policy, at some point, curriculum's going to have, need to look at that.
Right, yeah, uh and then uh at, at times, yeah, we'll consult with other affected areas to get feedback on those, so even though we, you know, are the, the gatekeeper or, or, you know, the funnel to the board for these, there is, there is collaboration with other uh committees and entities.
Yes, and I will often share a policy that's going to be reviewed with a building administrator, or the nurses, or um Nate for athletics, athletics potentially, so.
Right. Uh so yeah, so you'd share this with them, we don't have anything saying, don't do it, uh I think I H, let's see, I H B A A um looked okay to me, uh this is about making referrals uh to the um, to the I E P team, right?
Okay, then, and then the next one are, that, that's the, uh those are the procedures for the previous policy. So this really talks about the steps that we need to take to make sure that we're following the law.
Uh I did have a question on the, on the title, it says referral procedures, I feel like it should say the preposition for, referral procedures for general ed interventions. Or, cuz it says, says referral procedures, general education interventions.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to look at it, I don't recall, um I changed it because like I said, I went to main school management, um and let me see if I can log in right now and I can answer the question for you. and let me see if I can log in right now and I can answer the question for you. See if I typed it wrong. That's what they have. They have referral procedures and general education interventions. That's the title. I don't know what the matters, but that's the title that they use.
All right, all right, thank you. Uh I did have one thing on page two of uh this one, IHBAA dash R. So um uh transfer students. And then it um four lines down, uh the parent be provided with FAP, including services comparable. Have we defined FAP anywhere else in this? For inappropriate public education.
I will have to go back and yes. And if you have not. It, yeah, this is a great place to define it. Okay, I'll look.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else with that one?
I'm okay. Who else?
And then it's your policy JKE dash R expulsion of student guidelines. Uh nothing significant, just the changes that we've been making. And other policies, so. What's that? If you guys are set with that one? Then that brings you to the last policy. Okay, let's celebrate, right? Although I and there's still time for us to receive or that there's a new policy that needs to be approved, but this could be, this could be our last policy committee meeting of the year. Um and so this is the wellness policy. And I don't believe I really had any changes, um or significant changes under the wellness team, rather than identifying that you have to have principals at every level. We just put school administrator. Everyone is so busy. It is hard to have a building administrator from every single level. Same thing with student reps. I'm not going to have a kindergarten service student rep, right? It's going to be an older student. So you don't really need to identify that you're going to have a student rep of six through eight and nine through twelve. Again, kids, students are so busy, um trying to get them on that is also a challenge, so that's less restrictive. And then I added the legal reference that we didn't have before on this policy, um so that that is available. But those were really the only changes. Anything else there? Then if not, it would be great to have a motion for us to recommend these to the board um for the first read. And I guess I would ask um specifically around ACAAR and ACABR. If the board is going to do a first read tonight of their ACAAR and ACAB, then do you want these policies, request that they be approved in one reading? Otherwise, you're going to have different dates um and different meetings in which they were, right? So it'd be nice that they were all approved at the same time.
So uh the motion would include um the waiver of.
The second read for just those two policies, yeah. Does that make sense? So that they're all aligned, they're all in place at the same time? Okay. All right, so.
So I I'll make that motion. Thank you. All right, any further discussion? So it's going to be uh just review. The motion is uh to put ACA those first two uh for a a
C A A R, A C.
Thank you. Uh for a basically a first and second reading. And then the other uh policies for a first reading.
First and second reading.
Okay.
Do we have? I have a motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Uh any further discussion? Uh otherwise, we'll vote against it for the board. All in favor?
Yeah, great, thank you.
All right, any opposed?
That's policy.
That's it? Hey, nice job.
Thank you.
Um I'll uh we'll adjourn the meeting um for the policy committee.